It's now six o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education Work Session to order. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda as presented? A motion to approve the agenda has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Ms. Heather Duncan. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved, seven zero. School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia is an opportunity to celebrate and acknowledge the dedicated individual who shaped our local education policies and champion student success. Now I hand it over to Ms. Ball for a brief presentation.
Thank you Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, Board Members. Mrs. Chester, I'm going to ask you to assist me down here if you will. And also would like to welcome back our special consultant and retired Superintendent Dr. Oates. And of course, welcome to all of our guests as well. So Rockdale County Public Schools is joining in a statewide celebration this week to salute the efforts of local school board members. The week of March tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, has been proclaimed School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. The week-long observance calls attention to the contributions of local Boards of Education. And I would like to just share with you the proclamation from Governor Kemp. The proclamation reads, whereas the education of Georgia's children is the key to this state's continued prosperity and success. And whereas for Georgia to continue to grow, we must commit to our state's students by providing high academic standards, trained teachers and staff, and adequate resources to all schools. And whereas Georgians serving on school boards have demonstrated a strong commitment to quality public education by securing necessary resources, promoting academic standards, and fostering partnerships within communities. And whereas Georgians elected to Boards of Education collaborate with school systems, parents, businesses, and community leaders so that students can become educated, productive members of our state and nation. Now, therefore, I Brian Kemp, Governor of the State of Georgia, do hereby proclaim March tenth through the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as School Board Appreciation Week in Georgia. So now what I would like to do is share with you and invite all of our board members up to be recognized for their years of service. So and you all know that we, earlier this year, we implemented a service pin program for all employees. So we are going to award three of our board members who have earned a service pin their service pins. And we're going to do this in order of longest years of service first, okay? We actually have two board members who have served the longest together, so now I'm going to go alphabetical on you. And I will call first, serving eight years since January two thousand and seventeen, Ms. Pam Brown. And if you'll stay up here, we're going to do a group photo. And my photographer assistant here is going to take individual ones as well. All right, so again, serving eight years since January two thousand and seventeen, Heather Duncan. So if you're not aware, the service pins are in increments of five years, every five years. So they are earning their five-year service pin. Couple more years and you will earn your ten-year. Serving six years since January two thousand and nineteen, our Board Chairwoman Sandra Jackson Lett. Also earning her five-year pin. Serving four years since January two thousand and twenty-one, Akita Palmer. And in case anyone's wondering what's in their goodie bag, it's chocolate and a logo umbrella for that rain that's coming this weekend. He found the chocolate. Serving two years since January two thousand and twenty-three, our Vice Chairwoman Janie Jones. Now, right behind Ms. Jones, serving almost two years, next month will be two years, just shy of two years, since April two thousand and twenty-three, Justin Kenny. And our newest board member, serving three months since January of two thousand and twenty-five, Mr. Larry Cox. So again, we just want to say thank you for all that you do for the school system, the students, the parents, the community. We couldn't do this without you, so thank you for your service. You got to do everything with a phone and a camera. Easier to put on social media with a phone. One, two, three. Perfect. Okay. So now if you want to drop the take it off, this one we may use for other things as well. So if I could have our Board Chair and Vice Chair in the center. Can you move up? So, hold on one second, we have to move the screen. Derek knew exactly what I was looking at him for. Oh, that's probably fine, Derek, just turn it off. That's, that's probably good. Yep, that's good. Thank you. All right, one, two, three. And one with the phone. Oh, that's what Photoshop is for. All right. All right, everybody, close your eyes and on three, open them and smile. Close them, one, two, three, open and smile. Perfect. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ball, for that presentation and congratulations to all my fellow board members. Next, we have Ms. Pendergrass, please come forward to present the finding of the District two thousand and twenty-four Financial Audit.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Board Members, and Superintendent Chester. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present to you this evening. I understand that you all have a copy of the audit, the annual financial report, as well as our auditor's discussion and analysis. I'm not going to be going through those documents in detail, but I'm going to give a brief overview and then I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. For the fiscal year ended June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four, we conducted our audit this past fall. We issued an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion, that's the best that you can get. So congratulations to the Board and to management for achieving that goal. You all also had no findings. So again, that is something that the Board and management should be commended for their efforts. Your general fund fund balance was about six and a half weeks of operations if you were to incur your expenditures evenly over the year, which of course you don't. So June thirtieth is a lean time of year. When you think about when your taxes come in, they usually come in in the fall, so you're very lean at that time of year. And I also understand that you all have appropriated to spend some of that fund balance in FY twenty-five. So I would just tell you to make sure that you're considering, you know, where your fund balance is, especially when you consider that there are costs that you all incur for which you, you don't have any control, mainly your benefit costs, and the state determines those amounts. In addition to our financial statement audit, we also conducted what's called a single audit. It's a compliance audit of your federal programs. You all had expenditures of about thirty point nine million last year. We don't look at every program every year. We do a real space analysis whereby we choose programs on a rotating basis. This past year, we looked at your special ed program as well as your striving readers program. Those represented about six point eight million or about twenty-two percent of your total. And again, we found everything to be in order with those programs and we had no findings to report in regard to those. So I just want to commend management's for its job. Y'all are one of the first audits we get to because y'all are ready to be audited. And so we appreciate those efforts. And again, I just want to commend Ms. Smith and her team for their efforts and we appreciate the opportunity to serve you. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Pendergrass.
Thank you so much.
We would now recognize visitors who would like to address the Board, and we do have one visitor. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the Board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the Board. Registered speakers may not assign or year their speaking time to other speakers. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have special grievous procedures for these matters. Speakers should be professional and we respectfully ask that you refrain from using profane or engage in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request, call it, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum and public participation, which were listed on the comment cards you completed. I would like to welcome Mr. George Kellacheck to the podium, please.
Good evening, Acting Superintendent, Board Members, George Kellacheck. In front of you this evening, I have a little package. Several weeks ago, Mr. Cox and myself went to the Capitol on some legislative items and I picked up the latest Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency booklet, which may be of interest to you. Number two, you have a picture of Kool-Aid. Like to thank Mr. Phil Budenstake for not drinking the federal government EV dollars for EV school buses. He didn't drink the Kool-Aid. There are school districts throughout the United States that have invested millions of dollars and their EV school bus fleet is one hundred percent broken. Thank you, Phil, appreciate you. Next, the Rockdale Soil Water Conservation District in collaboration with the UGA Rockdale Extension Service, we will be hosting an ice cream and cookie social on April the twenty-fourth, starting at five o'clock, so you can drop by. And then I believe there's a board meeting that evening at seven. Mr. Mike Worley, who is the Director of the Georgia Wildlife Federation, will be our guest speaker at six thirty, who has spent many, many years with Georgia Power and then transitioned over to the Georgia Wildlife Federation. So just, we want folks to know what the Extension Service offers, all their services along with 4H and everything that the Soil and Water Conservation District is doing. Currently, we're working with Mr. Budenstake and the staff at CJ Hicks to do a tree planting and shrub planting for a beautification project, which will be Phase One. March the seventeenth through the twenty-first is Georgia Agriculture Week, which is our largest industry in Georgia, contributing over eighty-four billion dollars in two thousand and twenty-four to the economy. And you can go to agr dot Georgia dot gov to look at that information. And then finally, a couple of weeks ago, H2O, which is a large water organization throughout the United States, hosted with Skills USA, a very large trades event at the Georgia World Congress Center. We had over seventy-five hundred students across the state and I'm pleased to announce that we had sixty-five students from RCA participating. So we do appreciate all those activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kellacheck, right, right here. And thank you for all that you do for our community. Next, we have Ms. Corliss Turner.
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and all the other Board Members. First, I wanted to thank all of you for your efforts and what you do for the, the school children and the concern. But I wanted to give a special thank you to Vice Chair Jones, Justin Kenny, Sandra Jackson Lett, and Larry Cox. Thank you all for attending the meetings that was held on HB five eighty-one during your research. You attended meetings at the library with Tisa Smart Washington, Dante from ACCG. You came to the Zoom meetings also with the Assessor. So what I'm saying, thank you for doing your research, you know, and getting a full understanding when you made your, your, your vote. And I really appreciate that and I look forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corliss. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Cabinet Update. Ms. Chester, please introduce your cabinet and provide updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, and to our Board Members, Cabinet Members, and to our public in attendance tonight. We will hear from several of the Superintendent's Cabinet Members this evening. We'll begin first with a very special gentleman who is not a stranger to the board meetings, but he is serving in a different role. We'd like to welcome Dr. Terry Oates and serving as the Special Consultant for tonight's action item.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chairwoman Jones, distinguished Board Members, Superintendent Chester, executive and senior cabinet members, and the general public. I'm grateful to be here tonight and as a point of personal privilege, this is the first opportunity I will have publicly to congratulate my successor Shirley Chester. Congratulations Shirley on ascending to the Superintendentcy. An awesome responsibility and I know you'll do a great job. I do have a, an action item. Periodically, the Rockdale County Board of Education will receive a charter petition. And there are a couple of ways that a charter petition could be submitted. It could be submitted locally to the local Board of Education, or it could be submitted directly to the state Charter School Commission. And there are protocols that govern each of those instances of submission. And I, I know that in my seven-year tenure, I fielded three charter petitions. One of those three was rescinded or pulled back before it got to full consideration, but this would be the second one that actually has, has been fully vetted. And let me just share that Superintendent Chester did authorize me to complete review of this particular charter petition because during my tenure, I would always review those and then make a recommendation to the Board. And let's see here, we should be ready to go, Derek. So the key details of this particular pending charter petition is that it is a STEM-focused charter and the proposed location would be here in Rockdale County. The proposed grades to be served for the inaugural year of that prospective charter would be during the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year and it would, it would begin with K through second grade with plans to add an additional grade level annually thereafter each year until eighth grade is reached. Again, we said the proposed attendance zone is here in Rockdale County. And let me go past that to say, the Rockdale County Board of Education per law, and this is codified in our relevant Board policies, must act on a petition within ninety days of its receipt. And the, the office has indicated to me that for us that would be April fourteenth, so that's why we're addressing this issue here in March. And the state board rule that is indicated there lays out the legal requirements for review. And if the petition is denied, the district has sixty days to submit a detailed rationale for the denial to the petitioner. For, for convenience purposes and really to be efficient, what I do is when I submit my recommendation to the state Charter School Commission, I also include within that recommendation the rationale for my decision so that meets all of those requirements, including number three. So I'll go back. After having thoroughly vetted and reviewed this petition, substantively, the STEM curriculum that the petitioner is putting forth is at best redundant to the STEM services we already provide our students and at worst insufficient when compared to the curricular services that we're already providing. Another concern I have that is substantive in nature is state and federal compliance and management, particularly with respect to the early intervention program, the Special Education Program, IDEA. It doesn't appear that the staffing structure proposed by the petitioner is adequate or sufficient to ensure optimal state and federal compliance regarding those programs. Another concern that I have is that the, the plan, the plan of the petition is to begin with K-two grade levels. And that's a very important thing. I'm a former early childhood educator and former elementary school principal and the K through second grades are critically important. And you have to consider key things like, have you met the legal requirements of the child find process, which is an obligation that we have to find students who may be in need of specialized support services. And so that's very, very important. And also, when you're talking about kindergarten and first grade students, particularly those primary grades, you have to have a clear structure in place to identify any students who may have some developmentally delayed concerns that need to be addressed. And it would initially maybe be addressed through the early, early intervention program or some other interventions. Lastly, and this is a, this is a concern, and unfortunately, it's been a pattern that I've seen across the, the charter petitions that I've, I've reviewed in my, during my previous tenure. The petitioner has not articulated a comprehensive transportation plan for, for transportation since they've indicated that they will reside here in Rockdale County. And of course, a large share of our students are dependent upon transportation services that the district provides. Let me share with you that when you're reviewing a petition, there are about four categories, roughly, that you, within which you can reject or accept a petition. The, the category that I believe is appropriate in light of my thorough review of this petition is the rejection group. If you look at that, when you, in the rejection group, these applications are flawed in some way that is irreparable and it should be rejected for the current school year's petition review cycle, which means that the petitioner would be able to resubmit for consideration the next school year. And remember, this, this particular charter proposes to be operational the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year so they could resubmit, assuming that the Board accepts the recommendation, they could resubmit this petition next year and hopefully address the deficiencies that I have, that I've articulated. So the recommendation is that the Superintendent recommends that the Rockdale County Board of Education vote to reject the Horizon of Learning Academy Charter Petition on substantive grounds in the category of the rejection group, which indicates that this application is significantly flawed so as to be irreparable and will be rejected for the current school year's petition review cycle. The rationale is that Rockdale County Board of Education policy, IBB Charter Schools Board Policy, IBB Charter Schools and Board Regulation, IBBR, Board Regulation, IBBR, govern the, of the Charter School Approval Process. Board Policy, IBB establishes a timeline for the startup charter approval process, which the petitioner met. However, the petitioner would at best offer redundant curricular services and at worst offer insufficient curricular services comparatively. Inadequately planned and staffed for vital state and federal programs such as child find, early intervention program, IDA, and Title IX, and failed to provide a comprehensive transportation plan to accommodate the attendance of Rockdale County Public School students in need of such services. And that's the recommendation, Superintendent Chester and Madam Chair. Any questions?
No, sir, not a question, but I do want to take a moment as a point of personal privilege to say thank you. I know we will officially celebrate your retirement in the coming days, but Dr. Oates, we applaud your thirty-one years of service into public education and certainly the time you spent in Rockdale County. So thank you, as you would always say, thanks for all that you do and all that you've done for our children.
Thank you so much, Shirley. Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Denise Richardson.
Hi. Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, members of our Board, Superintendent Chester, our Cabinet Members and our community. Tonight, I'm presenting two action items on behalf of the Curriculum and Instruction Team. The first action item is headphones for our pre-K through twelve classrooms and novel sets for all of our secondary ELA classrooms. The goal of both action items is to support our birth to twelve comprehensive literacy plan. Now you know I never come before you without a short lesson, so get ready. I want you to take a look at the question that's on the screen. The question I'm posing, I see your faces, so I'm doing my formative assessment here. Which of these items would be a kind of text? Ooh, I love it. That means we can go straight to the action item right now. Good, good, good. I appreciate you all participating. I want you to also take a look at the rainbow. Just like an image, a film, an audiobook, that represents text. Text is about interpretation. Some will look at that rainbow and see it as a symbol of hope. Me, as a science teacher, I see refraction of light and prisms. Text is about interpretation. Now, the literacy team and I have had some passionate conversations around the evolution of text. So you're already ahead of the game because you understand that all of those pieces represent text, but there is an evolution in how we teach literacy. With that in mind, we can agree that text is more than words on a page. It is anything that can be communicated and to an audience through a message. It can be produced and understood with unique, with unique context. It is constructed by an author, interpreted by an audience, and has a specific purpose. Text can be a poem, a photograph, a podcast, a performance, and even this beautiful smile that I have right here today is all represented as text. It is created, consumed, and understood. There has been a conceptual shift with text. Take a moment, and I know you all have your phones. Look at those phones. With this single device, you engage with text in multiple ways, visually, auditorily, linguistically, and spatially. You watch videos, you tweet, you do your Facebook posts, you read articles, you interact with images, all seamlessly through your device. Consider a student sitting in a classroom. That student is now That student is now looking at a photograph or a painting. Just like you're engaging with that text, it is expected in our classrooms, our student has that same type of seamless interaction through novels, videos, songs, podcasts. We have to also incorporate subtitles as a support for understanding text. All of those different modes bring a deeper understanding and meaningful connection for our students. Now, I am not an expert in structured literacy. I'm going to ask you to hold all of those questions for the literacy team when they come in April. However, I will say that multimodal access to text is important to structured literacy. This shift is how our students are expected to learn. This shift is essential to our new standards as well as our new assessments that we will be having up for the upcoming year. That brings me to the action item. The action item reads, the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of headphones for literacy in our pre-K through twelve classrooms to support the multimodal text integration within our core instruction and intervention totaling one hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. This purchase will enhance our birth to twelve literacy plan, ensuring that all students have access to diverse literacy experiences, including podcasts, videos, music, audiobook and interactive text. By incorporating multimodal text options, students can engage with text in ways that support real-world connections, comprehension, critical thinking, personalized learning. Equipping our classroom with headphones will provide equitable access to these resources, strengthening literacy development and support into targeted instruction for all learners. The financial impact is one hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. The funding source is L4GA grant. The second action item. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of novel sets that are in English and Spanish for students in grades six through twelve to extend reading beyond the core text and provide customized learning experiences to make, to make interdisciplinary connections totaling one hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents. This proposal supports the birth to twelve literacy plan by ensuring that all students have access to common, a common novel, allowing students, teachers to design engaging lessons that deepen comprehension, foster critical thinking and enhance literacy development. This investment reinforces our district's commitment to expanding literacy opportunities and equipping students with the skills necessary for lifelong learning. Again, the financial impact is one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty, uh, one hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and forty-nine cents. Again, the funding source is L4GA grant. That concludes the action items. I appreciate you all for sharing our learning experience, engaging in the learning experience. Are there any questions? Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your presentation. It was great. Um, my question is about the literacy program. I do know that we recently had a literacy program and I believe it was in, um, um, elementary schools. I want to know, um, how did you choose this particular literacy program? Is this mandated by the state or is this something you all did research and found that we needed it? And also too, how will you track how impactful or the progress that this particular literacy grant is making on our students?
I love that question. If you recall throughout even last year, we came to the board and we talked to you about House Bill two.
Or, give me the number.
Forty-eight. House Bill forty-eight and.
Five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight. Both of, both of those bills are about the comprehensive literacy plan. If you remember, the literacy council mandated that the state identify five top literacy options. And with those specific options, we selected benchmark advanced. And we'll go into that a little deeper when we come second semester. But with those specific options, with the five options, we had to select one. We did our internal audit last year with our stakeholders. And with that internal audit, that included teachers, stakeholders, parents, everyone gave us specific feedback. And through that feedback, we landed on adopting and purchasing benchmark advanced. Throughout the year, we provided training on benchmark advanced. It actually started, I won't even say during the summer, Ms. Brown. It actually started for us like early March, once we knew what direction we were going. And throughout that time, we have trained leaders, we have trained teachers, we've trained our special ed personnel, we've trained our coaches. We continue to provide training that's embedded in our schools. And every single school has received at least two rounds of benchmark advanced training that, that's embedded within the school. In addition to that, we provided training during our IOD professional learning days. And every single teacher within our district, including our parents, have received support on that, uh, on that specific core resource. Along with that, we've also done our focus walks. So our focus walks are around, centered around the implementation of that specific resource. With those focus walks, we're going in and giving our building leaders specific feedback on what that implementation should look like. And we're supporting our leaders on managing that implementation, but specifically providing support on what it should look like in practice. Along with that, we also implemented a intervention resource. That is Wednesday or Sunday system. That specific resource is used with our specific population of our special ed students, our EL students and our EIP students. That training and support mirrors what we have done with benchmark advanced. Actually tomorrow, our team will continue to dig into that specific resource with our coaches. Our coaches have gone into their buildings. The expectation is that as they train with our district level coaches, they're going back to their building and the expectation is they model a transfer of that training into practice. I will add that with our team, I'm working with the literacy team now, we're identifying or to building a, what we call an innovation configuration map. And with that innovation configuration map, we're outlining what the implementation should look like for year one and what we expect that implementation for all of those resources to look like in year three. And with that, we can give specific feedback to our leaders, our coaches and our teachers on what that expectation is. Now, you didn't ask for all of that, but yes, ma'am. That is some work that we've been engrossing throughout the year and will continue to. Because what I've heard loud and clear, when we, when I've watched every single board meeting, the question is, how do we select resources and a return on investment? And that is something that we're focused on as a team. And honestly, that's something I'm focused on personally as a professional. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That is my response.
Any other questions?
That's for the upper grades.
We are.
Yes.
And we're getting them in Spanish.
That's awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
That's awesome.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Booten Sieg.
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett and Vice Chair Jones, board members and Mrs. Chester, Acting Superintendent. This looks like eight years ago. I like this. I have four action items tonight, board, uh, to, to bring to you this evening. The first one is the fire alarm systems in your contract. We brought this to you, uh, more than a year ago, probably. Some things changed because the state has opted in to allow us to have some capital outlay. So it's basically the same recommendation, just understanding that we have some capital outlay funding that will come from the state when we get involved in these projects. So superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the selection of Tankersley and Jackson Associates as an engineer firm for the Salem High School Fire Alarm Replacement, Rockdale County High School Fire, Fire Alarm Replacement, the Heritage High School Fire Alarm Replacement Projects. The electrical engineering service costs for these projects will be calculated using our engineers' fee schedule. The Georgia Department of Education facilities has approved these projects and capital outlay funding will be available. The scope of the project involves electrical engineering, oversight of the new and updated fire alarm devices, installation at all three locations, assurance of compliance with the current NFPA. And, uh, the current systems do not meet the latest compliance standards, but they must be upgraded. And our fee will be from the, uh, our architect engineer fee structure and will come from SPOST and CAFALI. The second one is the memorandum of understanding of the City of Conyers and Rockdale County Board of Education. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Conyers and the Rockdale County Board of Education for the City of Conyers use of the property located nine sixteen Pine Street, Northeast Conyers, Georgia, three zero zero one two for its red, white and boom Independence Day celebration. This memorandum of understanding has been reviewed by our superintendent and the general counsel. The City of Conyers wishes to use our property located here, uh, for their red, white and boom Independence Day celebration on July third, twenty twenty-five. This memorandum of understanding between the city and Rockdale County Board of Education will facilitate the city's use of the property. There are no financial impacts. I believe this is fourth year, fifth year with, we've done that here. The next one is the, uh, recommendation for the support, uh, vehicle purchase. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of a fleet twenty twenty-five GMC Savannah cargo van, uh, wheel drive twenty-five hundred for forty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars from Hardy Chevrolet Buick GMC, Inc. Uh, fleet groups, municipality and government sales under fleet account number nine 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 nine, SPD ES four zero one nine nine three seven three dash zero zero five. Expires in November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. This unit will replace facilities unit M sixty-seven. M sixty-seven, a two thousand seven, uh, cargo van experienced a locked up engine in January, uh, taking it out of service. The engine replacement cost alone is twelve thousand plus dollars. The new, the high mileage, the age, the tremendous amount of wear and tear on the body. It needs a paint job, needing new suspension, difficulty finding parts, the general condition of the unit led our fleet manager to the recommendation to replace this unit, and I support that recommendation. The replacement unit will be placed in the facilities fleet program and follow our vehicle assignment process. Forty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars will come from East SPOST. And then I'm happy to bring to you this contract, this A R C G dot contract. We've been working on this for a long time. Let me just say thank you, General Counsel, for all of your hard work several years ago, and then reviewing this again this year. And, uh, we're glad that we finally got it together tonight, or they brought it, so we can bring it to you tonight. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the Georgia Department Transportation twenty twenty-four contract. This is the last of three contracts. And approve Peach State Freight Line Thomas Bus Sales of Georgia as the vendor for the purchase of six seventy-two passenger buses totaling eight hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The Georgia Department of Transportation A R C grant funding allotment of five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars and East SPOST funding will be used for the purchase. It's under contract nine 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 nine, SPD SWL two zero two zero zero six three zero dash zero 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 two. The rationale is R C P S is the recipient of the Atlanta Regional Commission's eighty, twenty percent bus purchase grant up to a hundred twenty thousand dollar value per bus over three contracts. So let me just fill the history on that for those of you that were not here then. Uh, we were buying buses at that time for ninety-four thousand to ninety-six thousand dollars per bus when this first was awarded to us. And so together we figured buses won't go past a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Well, then they're changed from one contract that Santana worked and reviewed, got back to them ASAP. Then they went through a process with G dot, changed it to, we had to have three contracts. And over time, the bus, cost of a bus has gone up, as you can see in this contract tonight. So I just explained that to you because it's, they've drug it out. And I've had, uh, had my days with G dot, but here we have the contract in front of us. We will purchase six buses per year was the contract. Uh, the administration agency is G dot. The current bus price is a hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per bus. G dot will pay eighty percent of the seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The remaining part of the full grant's value for this twenty twenty-four purchase. The purchase will add HVAC equipped buses with improved air quality controls to the fleet. The units will be equipped with R C P S's standard bus base equipment include climate control, air ride driver for the seat, uh, remote control mirrors, a driver safety compartment and an air operated service door. Georgia State contract pricing was confirmed on March sixth, twenty twenty-five. The financial impact, G dot will pay five hundred seventy-two thousand dollars as for this third year grant. That's eighty percent of the seven hundred fifteen thousand dollar value of the buses they'll pay for. We will pay a hundred forty-three thousand dollars to make up the difference in the grant. And then because of the cost of buses today, we will also pay out of East SPOST a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, which is the difference between the value of the bus, the base. And this concludes my presentation and my action items. Ms. Chester.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Ford.
Good evening, Chairwoman Jackson Lett, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Acting Superintendent Chester and board members. Uh, I want to start off by highlighting an event or three events that happened on January twenty-fifth, um, of this year at Rockdale Career Academy. And the first was the technology showcase. Uh, you'll see here, um, each school in our district, um, attended and they highlighted the technology used at their school. You'll see the video here, a student at Salem actually designed, uh, and built this robot, robot and programmed it. Um, and the objective of this robot is to solve a Rubik's Cube. And so during this event, it just kept solving a Rubik's Cube, uh, which was interesting to watch. Um, you also see on this picture, uh, um, Edwards, uh, Middle School. Um, and they're demonstrating their health program and the technology used at their health program as well. Uh, the second event was the Georgia Student Technology Competition. This is a regional event that was hosted at Rockdale Career Academy. Uh, we had three hundred and one participants. Uh, forty-five of our students won first place at this regional event. And then in state competition, we had a first place winner, a second place winner and two third place winners, um, at the state level. So we're excited about that. The last event on that day was, uh, the Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl. Uh, the three winners were Lorraine Elementary, Barstow and then Pine Street. Lorraine attended the regional event afterwards and they came in third, so we're excited for them. And so tonight I wanted to talk to you about, uh, the student and teacher laptops. We're on a three-year refresh cycle. So this coming up year, the twenty-six year will be our middle school recycle. Uh, then you'll see the elementary and then high school, and then it just repeats itself. And so the student and teacher laptops, the student laptops are a Dell Latitude thirty-one forty. Um, they are a student device. It's a Windows device with a touchscreen. Um, they're eleven inch device. It has a spill proof keyboard and a fanless design. Um, so it does not burn a student when they put it on their lap. We also have the teacher laptops, which are fourteen inch Windows devices that are touchscreen as well. One of the new things, um, and Santana has one and I'll share this as well, is, uh, we're changing from the bags that students carry uh, because of the Rockdale policy of a clear book bag for safety. And so we, um, searched all over for the, the, the correct case. Uh, we searched several different companies. We tested them out and we came, uh, to decide the gumdrop case was the best case. It's a rugged case. It's a military grade durability. Um, it has the extreme drop protection, which means if you drop it from four feet twenty-six times, there'll be no damage to that. It has rubberized around all sides. It's raised level as well. And so when the students, if they put this in their book bag, it will not damage the device at all and it'll fit neatly in the students' book bags. And so I'll put this. We did drop them, uh, several times. So we, uh, we took them out in the hallway and dropped each case multiple times and checked, um, to see how they, how they survived those drops. And so tonight, uh, the action item, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of four thousand Dell Laptop thirty-one forty student laptops and peripherals for two million four hundred and fifty thousand under state contract. Uh, these devices are three year warranty on the devices and they come with an asset tracking and management programs with that. The financial impact will be from East SPOST. Now, we're also bringing, uh, the high school student devices. We're changing those out as well from the bags, uh, due to the clear bag policy. And so we're purchasing, uh, gumdrop cases for those. So the superintendent will recommend the board, Rockdale Board of Education approve the purchase of. the purchase of five thousand five hundred gumdrop rugged cases for two hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, and that's under state contract, and that's from East Plus. And then the last action item, the superintendent will recommend the Rockdale Board of Education approve the purchase of six hundred and ninety Dell Laptop thirty-two forty, um, teacher laptops and peripherals for five hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars and ten cents, and this is from East Plus as well. Any questions?
Any questions?
And Derek, thank you for underscoring not only the ruggedness. I know we all use Otter Boxes on our phone, but it makes our devices much more durable. But I really wanted to emphasize the piece about the safety because I know as we've been working to implement that clear book bag policy, we also wanted to make sure that, you know, with the students coming in with those darker bags, it's hard to really do those safety checks the way that we really want to. So it's a twofold win for us, one in terms of the ruggedness and protecting those devices, but also for, um, making our streamlining, streamlining our safety processes as well. So we wanted to make sure you had a chance to touch it so that you can see why we're emphasizing and wanting those next year for our high school students.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, Madam Chair Jackson Lett, Vice Chair Jones, remaining board members, Acting Superintendent Ms. Chester, cabinet members, and guests. Tonight I'll be bringing the preliminary financial reports for the month of February. Um, our revenues for the month were ten point seven million dollars. Last year our revenues were eleven million dollars for the month, a hundred and seventy-five million dollars this year, year to date, eighty point two, representing eighty point two percent of the budget. Um, last year our year-to-date revenues were a hundred and fifty-eight point five million, representing seventy-nine point two percent of our budget. Expenditures for the month were seventeen point five million. Year-to-date, we're at a hundred and forty-three point nine million, and that represents sixty-four point eight percent of our budget. Expenditures this time last year were sixteen point nine million, and our year-to-date was a hundred and thirty-nine point five million, representing sixty-eight percent of our budget. Incumbrances are one million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars. Our current fund balance is fifty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Last year's fund balance at this time was fifty-five million, three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars. On our balance sheet, our assets are sixty-six thou- sixty-six million, three hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Liabilities are at six million, six hundred, sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-five. Again, our fund balance is fifty-nine million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, seventy-seven dollars. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
And I'll bring up the rear board. I just want to say again, let me click, see if this works. Again, congratulations and happy School Board Appreciation Week. We know that you are an eight times exemplary award-winning Board of Education, so we salute you this week, and I, I thank Cindy for allowing for that presentation to take place at the beginning of our board meeting today. I also want to share that March is Youth Art Month, and so we kicked that off earlier this month at City Hall. I know Ms., our board chair, Ms. Sandra Jackson Lett, was able to join us as, uh, the city mayor, Vince Evans, issued a proclamation on behalf of Youth Art Month, and we were also able to kick off, um, the festivities with the Cherry Blossom Student Photography Art Show, and you can see some of those winners in the picture on the screen. It's also Speech Language Pathology Week this week, and so we recognize all of our S L Ps who work with the children, who have those language disorders or those, uh, voice disorders, and we know that they, um, really help to build that fluent literacy, that reading, writing, listening, and speaking skills in all of our students. And you can see that our Governor Kemp has also issued a proclamation on behalf of this week. Last night, Ms. Jackson Lett and I attended the front porch discussions at City Hall, and it was very interesting, I think, because board members, they talked about all of the different projects, uh, transportation projects that are taking place. And I know Mr. Budenseek and Mr. Spencer were also on hand to hear from the three men that you see in the front of that right picture there, and those were all engineers from the different areas, from the G dot, from the city, and from the county. And they talked about the various departments, that I twenty, uh, project that's taking place, and I believe the correct term, Phil, is a single point intersection. I learned that last night and what that will look like. So I wanted to include that picture so that you all would have a chance to see it. They talked about the project that's occurring on Sigmund Road, Salem Road, um, Flat Shoals Road, and also a lot of the roundabouts that are taking place. So we have a number of transportation projects that are occurring now. They talked about that the clearing has begun. We're, they're in the process of taking those utilities and moving the utility so the rest of the, um, steps can occur, but they're all slated to continue through two thousand twenty-seven through two thousand twenty-eight, I believe is the timeline for those various projects. So again, we're appreciative of Ms. Hotchkiss for organizing these front porch discussions, but for bringing in those officials so that we can learn about next steps and implications for us. And that's something that I know that Phil and his team are interested in knowing because we know that has an impact on our transportation routes and the logistics. We sent this press release out earlier, but we're very excited that all three of our traditional high schools were named A P honor schools. You can see their titles and the recognitions that they earned. This is something that we have had in place for a number of years, but we were glad to see that, um, most of them added the expansion school honor, and that's a credit to you board for allowing and paying for the funding for our students to take those exams. So you can see that recognition has paid off in terms of the honors that were received. We also learned of our C T A E graduation rate that was released last week, and you can see for the students who complete those C T A E pathways, they have a graduation rate of ninety-nine point four nine percent. And I can tell you, our C T A E director, Ms. Johnigan, who's not a stranger to the board meetings, she said to me last year, she said, that's our last year's C T A E rate was going to be hard to beat because last year we were at ninety-eight point ninety, it was just under ninety-nine percent. And she said, surely I don't know that we can go any higher, but I'm proud to say that we did increase. And again, it's a testament to all of the thirty-one pathways that are offered over at C T A E because I think the studies show and this data is telling us that when the students find something that they're interested in, they stick to it, and it allows them to flourish and excel in their high school years. I'll also say that our advanced academic students who completed that pathway, their graduation rate was ninety-nine point seven four percent. The students who completed a world language pathways, ninety-nine point two five percent, and those students who completed a fine arts pathway, ninety-nine point five nine percent. So again, when they're finding their niches in those respective areas, you can see it goes a long way in helping them to finish those critical high school years. We had several board members who were on hand for us to meet State Superintendent Richard Woods at the Magnet School, as he named our very own Dr. Charles Garner as a top ten finalist. So we are thrilled that he will go on to represent us at the state competition, which will be held in May, and we'll, we're hoping that he's going to bring back that honor as well. Now, I'll tell you that I had the privilege of, I know him as a colleague, but I also know him as a, as a parent. I was a parent, um, in Dr. Garner's, for Dr. Garner, and I can tell you that my child speaks frequently of the impact that Dr. Garner has made on her. So I'm very, very excited to see that he's not only earned the district recognition, but he's now a finalist in the state. So we wish him well and know that he will bring back the very best for our school system. I'll also add, because I know we've been trying to collect data on people who have graduated through our school system and who have come, come back to work in our school system, that Dr. Garner did in fact graduate from Rockdale County Public Schools, and he has since worked all of his years in Rockdale County. And so where he is right now, to have spent that time all in our public school system and to finish where he is now is truly, truly a testament and a wonderful thing to see. And his mom, Ms. Brown, okay? They are, they're residents here. This was exciting for us as well. We learned recently that Dr. Keisha Rouse, who is our director here in the school system, recently received the inaugural Francis Bryan Woman in Athletics Award. And so she is the first person to receive this distinguished award, and you can see the criteria there. It talks about this individual is one who embodies leadership, professionalism, and champions not only within our school system and our district, but within the community and across the state. So we're very excited that she was able to bring that recognition back to Rockdale. On Monday, we were, the cabinet members and I were able to come right here in the boardroom and attend the graduation, if you will, for our classified employees. And while I'm sharing this today, why I'm sharing this today, board members, is because we have spent a lot of time building and growing our certified employees, but we knew we needed to devote and implement special programs for our classifieds as well, and that was something that was derived from our strategic plan. And so I'm very, um, excited to say that this is the first graduating group of the leadership program, the classified program, and you can see those graduates there in the picture. You can see the dates that they attended their various classes, but then the program outcomes, um, that they accomplished while they were in there. So, you know, when we talk about succession and growing our own, we're not only focused on that certified side of our employees, but also looking very closely and working with the classified members as well. And Dr. Richardson talked about literacy, and you also heard her mention focus walks. And so board members, the teaching and learning team and I have completed our second round of focus walks, visiting a number, all of our classrooms, or all of our schools and a number of classrooms within the schools. But this is one classroom that I just wanted to give special recognition to because she absolutely made my day, or these two ladies made my day. Because when we talk about that structured literacy classroom, when we talk about the return on the investment with the resources, I think these two ladies exemplified that in that classroom. You can see they have small group sessions taking place. You can see evidence of the structured literacy components that are there. But to hear the children and to be able to glean from the students what they were doing, why they were doing it, and how they are able to monitor their learning was absolutely impressive. So, uh, Ms. Ashley Michaelenko and Dr. Dupass, Dr. Dupass is an E S O L teacher, but you can see that they really work closely together in order to implement those strong literacy components that we want to see in all of our classrooms. So I definitely wanted to give them a shout out here in the board meeting because this is, uh, they serve as a model for what we want all of our classrooms to strive to achieve. And lastly, board members, I'll point out that this Saturday we are having our annual Parent Academy. It will be held at the Rockdale Career Academy beginning at eight thirty A M., so we invite you to come out. You can see there are a range of topics that will be covered, but it is free for our families. So if you're interested in attending, we do wish and hope that you will come out and be a part of it. You can see the theme for this year is Thriving Twenty-Five. So excited that the, um, team has put this together because we always get, um, positive feedback and great responses from those who attend. And that's all I have tonight, board members, and that concludes the cabinet presentations.
Thank you, Superintendent Ms. Chester. Would the board like to take a five-minute recess? If not, we will continue with our meeting. Everybody in favor? Thank you. The cabinet has provided numerous presentations on the information. I would like to ask the board members to please review the information. Please review the February twenty twenty-five board minutes and provide any edits to Ingrid. We will vote on the minutes at the regular session. There is no old business or new business. The cabinet has provided no action items for the board to vote on next week. Is there a motion for the action items to be placed on a consent agenda?
Second, Akita Palmer.
A motion to consider the action item, a consent agenda at the regular session has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Akita Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved, seven to zero. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel? A motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel has been made by Ms. Janie Jones and second by Mr. Justin Kenny. Is there any discussion? All in favor? The motion is approved, seven, zero. The motion is approved, seven to zero.
Seven thirty eight and the board has come back into open session. Do I hear motion to conclude the meeting? Motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and seconded by Ms. Akita Palmer in a discussion all in favor. The meeting is concluded at seven thirty eight.